City council meeting to order because of COVID-19 restrictions. Our meeting tonight will be held virtually via Zoom. Public comments for the meeting were accepted in advance by mail and email. These comments will be read into the public's record shortly. If you'd like to submit a public comment for our next meeting, please visit our website at www.marium.org and follow the directions that are listed there. As a reminder to the city council, please be conscientious of others trying to speak. Speak slowly and clearly and state your name prior to speaking. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. The format for the council consideration on items tonight will be staff presentation. Then I will open time for council questions and please hold questions until the end of staff presentations. If you have a question when I, if you have a question when I ask them, please physically raise your hand so that I can see it on the video. And right now we'll have our city clerk called roll.
Here, here. Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember hands.
Here.
Councilmember call down.
Here.
Councilmember now.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Silver's.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Very good. We're going to move into our public comments. As it would turn out, Julie may have the largest role in our meeting this evening because she's going to please read any public comments that were submitted in advance into the record. In that last count, I think there were 14 of them. So Julie, you've got the floor.
Okay. Our first one is from Joan Atichi. Says requiring masks is a crime against humanity. No elected or appointed official has the authority to require anyone to veil their face. Second one is from Kate Grace. No address. Subject, I will not comply. Your mandate is unconstitutional and any so-called law you pass will be too. Me and my family will not comply. Next one is from Rachel Baker. No address, says lifelong resident of Kansas. Vote no. The proposed public uniform code that includes fines and possibly jail time for not wearing a mask is egregious, is draconian and total overreach. Please vote no. Next one is from Jessica Moore. No address. I am a lifelong Johnson County, Kansas resident. I am now raising my own children here in Mariam and I want them to grow up not fearing illness and disease. It is part of the circle of life. The factual mortality numbers are unknown because there are not strict guidelines on how to qualify COVID-19. And this continues to be a very blurry line, which should be the very first priority on everyone's list. Now we are living in a world where mothers are afraid to let their children play outdoors on a playground with my children, leaving both children confused as the natural, as the unnatural state of self-isolation is not human nature. We need one another to survive and thrive. But now the fear that has been instilled in these families and children's brains without proper causation, six months' worth, is disenfranchising our community and city. Flatten the Curve Campaign is out the window. What is next? What are the guidelines stating real numbers outlining the end of this governmental imposition of our free country and medical and health economy? As a registered nurse in the great state of Kansas, I am pleading that you remove the mask mandate. That, that clear guidelines and numbers are set so we are all on the same page. When does isolation begin and when does it end? Where are the studies being done? Second and third-party, non-affiliated research being done with virus-appropriate masks? How does the virus really spread, work, die, thrive, et cetera? This isn't stuff that's, that's never been done before. Why aren't we doing it? Our state should step up as a role model for the rest of this country and honor freedom of speech and physical freedoms, as well as lead research to effective PPE for this and other viruses that has a mortality rate. Because apparently one death is too many. Please share tips for building, supporting, and maintaining a healthy immune system so when people do get sick, they can run the course of illness and continue to thrive on. So many more thoughts, but my main concern here today is that you vote no on punishing those who wish to live a life of freedom and autonomy without fear until a clear outline of how we are defining COVID-19 deaths, infection trends, and effective PPE is addressed. No more showing, throwing shots in the dark. Turn on the light and let's get this done right. The idea that Mariam would choose to throw their citizens in jail for choosing what is best for themselves and their family is frightening. The people that choose to wear masks should have the right to do so, even if it's deteriorating the general population's health in a slower, less noticeable manner. I beg that you do not go down this slippery slope criminally enforcing a public uniform. The next one is from Bonnie Morris. I think people should use their own judgment on this matter. If you feel that you are at risk, by all means, wear a face mask, but to make it mandatory is wrong. There are people that cannot wear masks for medical reasons, PTSD, et cetera. And to find these people or to make them prove it over and over again is wrong. Maybe they should tell us what we need to do in case we catch the virus. Better diet, extra vitamins, supplement, sun, exercise, et cetera, instead of hiding behind a mask and hiding in our homes. I read this morning that 70% of people that got COVID were wearing a mask and 3.9% of people that got COVID were not wearing a mask. Kids are getting strep throat from wearing masks all day. My sister-in-law got pneumonia from wearing a mask all day. Doesn't make sense to me. If I'm not allowed to go in, in a store because I can't wear a mask, that is fine and I am okay taking my business elsewhere. But to force me to wear a mask is government overreach as far as I'm concerned. What if our city council government worked on making companies getting rid of the toxic crap that they put in our household cleaners, candles, air fresheners, et cetera, that cause cancer, asthma, Caesar, seizures, et cetera? Our bodies are made to fight off the common cold, flu, et cetera. Building a stronger immune system by eating right, exercise, vitamins, supplements, et cetera, would be the smart way of going about it. What's next? Only one car per household? One pet per household? Seriously, give them an inch and they will take a mile. I'm sorry if I offend anyone, but enough is enough. Our rights are slowly getting taken away and once they're gone, there's no getting them back. Ridiculous. The next one is from Mark Peterson. Says we, the citizens of Johnson County, will boycott the city of Mariam should they choose communism over liberty. Make not wearing a mask a criminal offense, you will lose. You cannot jail us all and you cannot survive without revenue. Concerned American U.S. The next I have are through email, so I'm going to switch over. Okay, this one is from Martin Olmer. Says as a resident of Ward One in the city of Mariam, Kansas, I do not agree with the changes proposed to the Uniform Public Offense Code for the state of Kansas by adding section 10.9 violation of a public health order. I feel it's an, it is an overreach of any city to make it a criminal offense to not follow an order that county health officials thinks is best when it has the likelihood of negatively affecting more than it will help. Next one is from Brian Hague. Says he's from Overland Park. Got plenty of money to spend wherever I choose. If you vote to make not wearing a mask punishable by fine or jail time, this Johnson Countyan will be sure to never spend one dime in your city again. Focus on the real problems your city faces, like schooling and mental health, and quit wasting the taxpayers' and voters don't forget money talking about mandating face diapers. The next one is from Billy Crown, 6633 Wed Street. I read the agenda for tonight and want to applaud the project to make our public spaces safer by making touchless upgrades to city facilities. Better door openers on all exterior doors will benefit residents for years, not just during COVID, but every cold and flu season and every day for the physically challenged, and even making it safer and easier for people whose hands are full. Additionally, making all the sinks and soap dispensers touchless makes our restaurant, restrooms more convenient, sanitary, attractive, and modern. And I am actually excited to think about that upgrade being completed. Touchless sinks, soap, and door openers on external doors are expensive at around $75,000 in total, but a great investment, which I'm glad to see in our city. Thank you. Curiously though, I didn't see any step-in pulls on the shopping list and I'd write in to request them. Step-in pulls are a single piece of metal that screws onto the bottom corner of the bathroom doors and functions like a handle that you can use with your shoe if you want to avoid touching the normal handle with your hand. They are very simple. They have no moving parts. They require no maintenance. I think Mariam should add them to all our city-owned restroom doors. They were invented by a Northeast Johnson County resident and while there are a few companies selling similar products today, Step-In Pull is the largest and operates a semi-local manufacturing plant in Springfield, Missouri. It costs very little at around $20 per door for the fancy ones. This simple upgrade will reduce all germ transmission in a key location, restrooms. Step-in pulls will support 2020 Council Objective 1.3, environmentally sustainability initiatives by reducing paper waste and saving, and save money as well by reducing the cost of restroom paper used to open doors. Step-in pull are physically and environmentally responsible. Please add step-in pulls for restroom to the touchless upgrade project. Also, perhaps more importantly. I will get back to him in a minute. I, it cut off the screen. Get him back here. But we'll go on to Daniella Herman is our next public comment. Okay, to whom it may concern. I got word that the council is voting on whether or not to fine and/or jail people for not wearing masks. Do not do this. It's absolutely absurd and utterly infringes on the constitutional freedoms of American citizens. My kids and I have several medical reasons why wearing a mask is dangerous for us, so it's not physically or medically possible for everyone to wear a mask. Also, people will choose to not shop in Mariam and will simply take their business elsewhere. My family and I will never set foot in Mariam again and neither will, will many other families I know. We are many and we will make sure that everyone knows not to go to Mariam. This will hurt your town financially and hurt its business. It will hurt the schools, churches, businesses, and anyone else in Mariam, and it will hurt Shawnee too because these towns are so close. We're not always sure where Shawnee ends and Mariam begins. You'll hurt the entire area. And your town suffer this massive revenue loss. People certainly won't want to buy their house in Mariam. I'm sure property values will decrease. I'm about to buy a new home and I will definitely leave Shawnee/Mariam area if you do this. I'll already, I'll take any money to any other part of the country or outside, outside any part of the county or outside the county. You've already deterred me from buying anywhere close to Mariam, so the damage has already been done. Let's hope other new buyers don't get wind of this for your sake. But we are prolific on social media, so this won't be quiet for long. Also, police have bar, have far better things to do. And this will recreate an unpleasant antagonistic nasty relationship between law enforcement and the people. Is that what you want? We'll turn Mariam into an unfriendly, hostile, morose, fearful, negative, unwelcome, nasty place and your town will be shunned by thousands of people. It'll be just too much trouble and such a headache to go to Mariam for any reason and people will just stay away. Can you afford that? Think carefully. It would be a big mistake if you did this. That was Daniella Herman. She did not provide an address. This one is from Catherine Seiler from 9800 West 53rd Street in Mariam, Kansas. Dear council members, I'm imporing you not to vote in favor of criminalizing those who cannot wear a mask. I have a disease that affects my lungs. Wearing a mask leaves me terribly out of breath. I have a special needs son that has a significant sensory issues. Getting him to wear a mask is a real struggle. My daughter suffers from panic attacks and anxiety when she has to wear one. These are real problems our family struggles with. If this passes, I will be forced to spend my money in other cities besides Mariam. This one is from Chad in Kathy Row. It has come to our attention that the city council will be considering an ordinance tonight that would make last marrying mask, wearing mask in public mandatory and not wearing one a criminal offense. We believe this is beyond our reach as a city. We personally are very conscientious about wearing masks in public. However, we think it should be a choice. Our police have better things to do than trying to enforce an ordinance that is by and large unenforceable. We also value our personal and public freedom. Liberty is a fragile thing, not long maintained by many nations. We can lose it piecemeal with well-meaning but unwise ordinances that go far beyond the intended consequences. If citizens want businesses, et cetera, to enforce mask-wearing and they don't, then they are free to go elsewhere. That is the American way. We will surely lose as we implement force in our city and country. We suggest this council vote against this tonight. This one is from Melissa Campbell. She does not provide an address. Said I would appreciate you not mandating a public health procedure and protocol when you're not a medical professional. We Americans like freedom to breathe. Since the CDC readily admits that COVID-positive patients are made up of 70% always mask wearers and 3% non-mask mask wearers, it makes sense to push, it makes no sense to push for a dangerous filthy mask. My family and I are not interested in a mandate that threatens jail time for breathing God-given oxygen. Numbers do not support masking. I do not consent. I am sovereign over my body. You are not sovereign over my body. Amy Hall is the next. Yeah, I think she provided an address. I want to weigh in on the addition of language making non-mask use a criminal offense punishable by jail and/or a fine. Wearing a mask is believed by some to have positive benefit for their health. It is also widely documented, documented to have potential negative effects for the wearer. For that reason, no city has any business making it a criminal offense not to wear one. In addition, there are many people who cannot wear them due to medical reasons and mental health reasons. And there is no way, just by looking at someone, if, to know if they fall into those categories. Please educate yourselves on the negative consequences of mask use, such as what the CDC just put out documenting that 85% of those who have tested positive for COVID said they wore a mask all the time. People literally have a higher risk of testing positive if they wear a mask than if they don't, which is understandable if you read the studies and papers written on mask use in the last decade prior to when there were, when there was political and monetary motivation to say it was an inappropriate response to a virus. Those who got sick with SARS-CoV-2 wear a mask always, 70.6%. Never wear a mask, 3.9%. There is not a single randomized controlled test that found masks effective. On the contrary, every single one says masks are ineffective at preventing virus transmission. Every one. And every health organization in the world understood this until a few months ago. The data did not change. There has been a wave of staff infections around the mouth, mouth. Or C of the lungs due to constant mask use of the public. Okay, I'm going to try to bring up Mr. Crow's comments.
I've got his up here on my screen. You know where you left it?
Yeah, let me bring it up here just one second. Sorry about that. I just cut off on my screen.
I believe she stopped at the point where he's sheet, where he said that it would save on paper towel usage of people.
Okay. Okay, um, step-in pulls.
Yeah.
Let's see. It would counsel objective by reducing paper waste and save money as well as reducing the cost of restroom paper used to open doors. Step-in pulls are physically and environmentally responsible. Please add step-in pulls for restrooms to the touchless upgrade project. Also, and perhaps more importantly, I need to cover one of the items proposed to be adopted from this year's Universal Public Offense Code updates. As excited as I am to give people the ability to avoid touching dirty restroom door handles and as much as I utilize and appreciate face covering myself, I must object completely to the criminalizing American citizens who do not wear a mask on the order of an unelected health official. Section 10.2 of the UPOC, for your consideration tonight, would do just that. 10.29 criminalizes citizens who don't wear masks when a health official tells them to and sanctions the use of force against these citizens by imprisonment, but to imprison them for up to 30 days and fine them as much as $500. I'm sure our police will use their discretion and compassion in these manners, matters, but I feel that merely giving this law your approval is something to take seriously and it's un-American. Someday, less compassionate offers, officers joined our police force or directed its operations, this law could cause real harm. I could even, it could even be used selectively against the poor or those with difficulty breathing. America is the oldest country today that was originally founded with a constitution requiring democratic consent of the governed via public elections. Laws like this dull the brilliant luster of the uniquely American traditions of liberty and freedom, which generations of soldiers have given their lives to preserve. Let's not sign that away now. Less than a year after COVID began, just because we feel overwhelmed by this crisis in this moment. We are strong people. The lens of history will not look wisely upon lives, laws like this. You need to look no further than our response to the tragedy of 2001 to see how small overreactions like this can add up over time to wildly change the character of the nation. It would sadden me to see Mariam go along with this. Using force via UPOC 10.29 to punish people who don't comply with orders from an unelected health official is wrong. An equal people must not use force against each other, so with equality necessarily comes a mutual trust and respect. I urge you to trust and respect your neighbors to make the best decisions for themselves regarding how they change their lives to fight COVID. We will get through this together, I promise. I apologize if a city council meeting is an unusual venue to voice my concern for American liberty, but I feel comfortable writing you and perhaps more importantly, your specific choice to adopt section 10.29 of the UPOC or not right here is a very real local issue, which is why I took the time to talk to my neighbors who have so far agreed 100% and take the time to write you today. Mask requirements should be a private matter between property owners and their guests, not a matter of government force. Please reject section 10.9 of the Uniform Public Offense Code. Wishing you good health and liberty. And that was the last public comment.
Very good. Well, we will talk about some of these issues. They're on the agenda when we get to it. So I'm going to move past the public comments. We can reserve any questions about some of these issues because again, I think we're going to talk about later on the agenda. So and we're going to move into the consent agenda portion of our meeting. And I would like to start off by stating that I want, I'm going to remove item number two because I've already received a request by a council person because they have some questions. So basically that leaves one, three, and four. And all, all three of these items are listed under the heading are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted in one motion. There'd be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which case that items will be removed as number two was and considered separately. So unless I get a request to remove one, three, or four, I'll accept the motion to accept those three. Bob Pape.
Yeah, Mayor, I would move that the council approve consent agenda items one, three, and four.
Do I have a second? Scott?
I'll second that. Scott Devoe.
Motion made in second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Devoe.
Aye.
Councilmember hands.
Aye.
Councilmember call down.
Aye.
Councilmember now.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Okay, those items are passed. We're going to move to their approval of purchase to a public safety radios. Chief, the question will be to you. I think the question was how, what is the life expectancy on these, these radios at this expense?
We're expecting 10 to 15 years.
You want to give a, just a slight rundown about why it is we are kind of forced to do this and, and the value that we are going to get out of it, given again the expense?
Yeah, the, the previous radios we had 10 years old. When we bought those, a lot has changed technology-wise and requirement-wise. There's a lot of, there's been a lot of force of rebanding for frequencies and regional interoperability. so that we can talk to not only agencies here in Johnson County, but agencies in the metro area, Missouri, fire departments, public work departments, and so on, federal agencies. So as that technology expanded, it just outran the ability of our radios to be programmed because these radios were built to be reprogrammed and encrypted and all the other things that are required for this interoperability and reband. These new radios have built-in ability to be reprogrammed, to have software updates, and so on. Previous radios prior to these lasted fifteen years. So I can't look across the ball and tell you what the technology is going to do in ten to fifteen years. But the quality of the radios, we're definitely expecting to get ten to fifteen years. And if they're still programmable quality-wise, you know, I expect them to last even longer than that. But that's what we're shooting for is a ten to fifteen year lifespan.
I'd like to add to that, if you don't mind. The Motorola product, and I'm not a shelf for Motorola, they're very expensive, but they make probably the best radios in the world. And this radio literally will last, these individual portables particularly, they will by and large last that full ten to fifteen years without breaking down or without being inoperable. So and but they come at a cost because they probably are the best. And again, they're probably one of the more expensive ones. We've in years past tried to buy lesser expensive replacement radios. They haven't worked out. And with the technology required today, Motorola has pretty much got a market in their hands. The other thing too, I think, to remind everyone, in case you haven't thought about it or maybe didn't know, we are kind of mandated when the county decides that they're going to change radios because of their system needs. We have two choices. We can go along with them or we can branch out on our own and get our own dispatchers and our own radio system and do what we want. We've looked at that a couple of times in the last twenty years. And I will tell you that we probably save a million and a half to two million dollars just in salaries and equipment by virtue of the fact that the Johnson County Sheriff's Department is kind enough to provide us that service for absolutely nothing. And they do a very good job. So it's a lot of money, but the alternatives don't look any brighter. In fact, they might look much worse. I can tell you, being former police chief, I never relish the fact of ever having my own dispatchers because they, they bring with them their own special challenges. And those are challenges again that we, we don't have to face here. And because we have professionals in the county that take care of it for us. Mr. Yadrich, did you have any other questions?
I did not.
Okay, very good. Then I'll accept the motion in a second on item number two. Bob?
Yeah, Bob Pape, Mayor, I would make a motion that the council accept item number two.
And Whitney?
Mr. Mayor, second that.
We have a motion in a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Knapp.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Devoe.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. We'll move out of consent agenda into the mayor's report. One of the disadvantages, one of the primary disadvantages of having our meetings on Zoom is we don't get a chance to properly honor our employees when they receive merit awards. We invite them, not everyone can attend, but many times they do have and we get a chance to see them and thank them for their long service. And we do that now quarterly because we, we used to do it once a year, but it took too long. One of the things our city has a great value is in that our employees don't leave. We have, I mean, not that it never happens, but we have some people here with some very long tenure. And there are reasons for that. They, there's loyalty, they, the city treats them fairly. We're a good employer. I mean, I can tell you that because I worked there for twenty-six years. So we get people with it with tenure and we like to honor them. And we got two groups tonight, five-year group and the twenty-year group. And I'll let Mr. Engel announce those names. If you would do that this time, I appreciate it.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. Again, as, as the mayor said, it's, it's somewhat unfortunate that we can't get together, but these, these folks will be recognized at the city level within their department. So we do want to celebrate it at the council level, but they will receive some recognition at the staff level, so rest assured. With five years of service in our community development department, we have Tony Adamson. Within our police department with five years of service, we have Jared Ruby. And then with twenty years of service, we have David Easley in our community development department. He's our neighborhood services coordinator. So want to thank them for their hard work and their effort and their employment with the city and all the good work that they do. And again, we'll recognize them here at the, at staff level. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank them.
Yep. Be sure and pass on that our council is very grateful for all the, the hard work that they do. We're going to turn this over to our police chief. The next item has to do with police contacts and legal authority presentation. And Chief McLaughlin was asked to give a presentation to council in, in view of the recent concerns that our society has about police authorities, abuse of power and whatnot. While we, we rarely have complaints in Miriam, it's always good to know kind of what the role of our police department is. And so I'm going to let him talk to you all about, again, police contacts and legal authority present in a presentation. So Chief McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen, let know if you can see this PowerPoint presentation.
Yes, we can.
Awesome. All right, well, the, the basic foundation for any police contact is the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution. And that basically says the right of people to be securing a person's houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated and no warrants shall issue upon but upon probable cause supported by an oath or affirmation and particularly describing the place to be searched and persons or things to be seized. The key word in the Fourth Amendment is against unreasonable searches and seizures. The that word comes into play because the courts look at whether or not the actions that the police officers are doing are reasonable. And so that's how we get case law. When cases go to the appellate courts, the federal courts or the Supreme Court, and they're looking at Fourth Amendment issues, they look at whether or not your search was reasonable. So the first type of contact that we have with citizens is on a consent basis. Officers have every right to talk to any citizen without it becoming a quote-unquote seizure under the Fourth Amendment. And the vast majority of our police contacts are done on a consent basis. In order for it to be consent, officers don't make any demands upon any person they stop and talk to. We don't demand ID. They're free to engage in conversation, answer questions, and/or walk away or refuse to talk. And this is not considered seizure under the Fourth Amendment. The second level of contact is under reasonable suspicion. And the Supreme Court has defined reasonable suspicion in a nineteen sixty-eight case called Terry v. Ohio. And you'll hear this referred to in a lot of legal documents as a Terry stop. And basically what Terry has told us through the Supreme Court is an officer may forcibly stop a person if based on the officer's training and experience that they have reason to believe the person is engaging in criminal activity. The facts presented are looked at in perspective of what, what a reasonable officer believe the activity is possible based on the same set of facts. That's an important distinction between what we'll talk about here in the next slide, probable cause and reasonable suspicion. Reasonable suspicion is based on what an officer knows. And that's based on their experience, their individual experience, their individual training so that they can look at the facts that are presented to them and make inferences based on those, that level of training and that level of knowledge. A Terry stop is a temporary detention. The officer is allowed to ask questions and further investigate. Time is not indefinite. The courts don't say you can spend all day on a Terry stop interrogating a person. Now they have not defined what is an appropriate amount of time. It goes on a case-by-case basis and based on the facts that are presented to the court at the time. If the officer cannot establish probable cause to arrest, you must release the person. Must have facts greater than a hunt, so you can't go, I think that person's involved in criminal activity, I'm going to stop them. You have to be able to articulate reasonable facts that would indicate that is possible a crime is being committed. If you look at a hundred percent, and we, this is just how people, I just use this example so people can understand what we're talking about in terms of being able to prove something. If a hundred percent equals no doubt a person is guilty of a crime, think of reasonable suspicion as twenty-five percent certain that a person has committed a crime. It's a very low threshold to do a Terry stop. Probable cause. Officer's knowledge of facts that would lead a reasonable person to believe a person is committed, is committing, or is about to commit a crime. Notice the difference in terms from reasonable suspicion. The facts to detain are in a perspective of a reasonable officer, but the facts to arrest are in the perspective of a reasonable person. So basically what the courts are saying, in order for you to arrest somebody, that I have to be able to convince any person, a reasonable person, that the facts of the case indicate that more likely than not, a person committed that crime. Again, if you're on that hundred percent scale, probable cause can be thought of fifty-one percent chance of where the person committed the crime. So to, in order to arrest you, I don't have to have the facts in place that would necessarily convict you. I just have to be able to prove that more likely than not, you committed that crime. That's the end of that presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I can't see anybody's hand, so you'll have to return your screen back to to how you not share your screen.
Trying to find the
Wow, your desktop is amazing.
Your desktop is stressing me out.
Got a lot of stuff.
Holders.
Click on some of those. See what they are.
Exactly.
I actually do have a question. This is Jason Silvers.
Yes.
And it actually, it probably is better suited for the next section, so I might wait for that. The adoption of the UPOC.
Well, anyway, while we're waiting, with regard to Fourth Amendment and all things other that were discussed, if there anyone has any questions, and if you do mention your name, and I'll give you the floor.
This is Chris Hands.
Yes, right, there we go.
So how often and when are officers educated on this? I'm assuming the mayor gets to do it out at the school, and then you get to do it again?
Yeah, we, we give trainings on, on arrest, probable cause, reasonable suspicion throughout the year. They usually have a yearly class. It's a formalized class. Then through our Lexipol policies, of course, we have policies that dictate reasonable suspicion, probable cause. We take what's called daily training bulletin. So every day, a new daily training bulletin comes out that the officers are supposed to review, and it's on some aspect of the policy. Throughout the year, my, my best guess is they will receive anywhere between five or policy-related scenario and test questions based off search and seizure and reasonable suspicion. Additionally, almost every class that we take that has to do with some sort of involvement of detaining people, whether it's for use of force, class or any of that, we go over Fourth Amendment responsibilities. I can tell you, from my perspective, the Fourth Amendment is one of those things that I encourage and demand that our officers are familiar with. We review case law regularly because it changes. It changes with every court decision that comes down. As a matter of fact, just as an example, I have a case here that came out of Kansas, which Kansas Dean Glover went to the US Supreme Court, which further defined reasonable suspicion. And basically what the justices said in that is a police officer's common sense is to be relied upon when making reasonable suspicion determinations. So they go and expand or contract reasonable suspicion, probable cause, a lot. So we have to review case law. We do that yearly as well. I am ravenous when it comes to case law because it interests me. My former boss, the mayor, can tell you that. I was reading on it. I still do, and I send stuff out to officers. So we rely on it heavily because to me, it is important. I don't want us violating Fourth Amendment rights because there's a reason why it's fourth in the line of the ten rights that are in the Constitution. So it's important and we treat it as such.
Mr. Neal?
Yeah, um, you, you were talking, in the, in the gradations of contact there, you were talking about reasonable suspicion and probable cause. In regards to arrests, where does the asset forfeiture threshold kind of fit in, you know, in terms of that? Is that at probable cause or is it after some level beyond that?
Well, so asset forfeiture is actually a civil action. It is not technically related to probable cause or reasonable suspicion. So now, we don't forfeit property unless we have a crime. So usually if we have a crime, then someone's been arrested. It's not, it's not tied directly or indirectly. Our policy is this, is one, we have to arrest someone for a crime. Generally has to be a felony crime, and generally the property that we're seizing has to obviously be deeds of a criminal act. And two, they generally have to be over a certain dollar value because we don't we don't forfeit cars because someone had a roach in their aster. We just don't do that. It's not, it's, it's not reasonable. It's not, it's, in my opinion, it's too punitive. We, we take assets from drug dealers and we take assets as obvious that the, that there are proceeds from their criminal actions right then and there. So we have policy and procedure on that, but they're really not tied to one another as far as one having to do direct correlation.
Thank you.
Mr. Knapp? Turn your volume on. Can't hear.
I'm sorry. I'm familiar with probable cause, but under reasonable suspicion, could you give me an example of that?
Absolutely. So Terry, I'll just give you what the Terry stop was. Terry was involving a detective who happened to be standing outside of a bank. And the detective noticed that the particular person he was watching was doing actions that he thought were suspicious. And what he thought was suspicious was, it looked like to him, based on his experience of being a detective who has investigated bank robberies, that that particular suspect was making actions that looked like he was casing the establishment for a robbery. So the detective contacted the person. And because he thought he was there to rob the bank, he therefore assumed, based on his experience, that most bank robbers are armed. If the person was armed and did what was a pat-down frisk on the outside for weapons, and he found the gun. So out of Terry stop, we got two things that the court ruled upon. The Terry stop is what is reasonable suspicion. Obviously, the detective did not have enough to say beyond a reasonable doubt to be able to convince any of you that that person was actually there to rob a bank based on what he observed. But what he did have was enough information that the, that the court said it's reasonable based on his acts, on the actions of the suspect and the inferences that the officer can make on his, based on his experience and training, that a temporary detention of that suspect is legal on the Fourth Amendment so that the officer may further investigate whether or not that person was about to commit a crime. In addition to that, we also get what's known as a Terry frisk. And the court ruled that because that inference was made, that it was reasonable for the officer to believe that that person was armed that person was armed based on his activity, uh, that an outside pat-down frisk of the person for weapons was legal at that point. So we actually got two case laws out of that one case called a Terry frisk and a Terry stop.
Thank you.
And in the Glover case I just mentioned, uh, police officers' common senses rely upon when making reasonable suspicion determinations. That case was an officer did a records check of a license plate of a vehicle he saw because he recognized the vehicle and thought that the registered owner of the vehicle was in fact a, uh, person who had a suspended driver's license. He did run the vehicle. The registered owner did come back with a suspended driver's license, so he stopped that vehicle. The driver was the registered owner and was charged with several crimes, including a habitual violator. He took that case to the Supreme Court, saying that the officer didn't have probable cause to believe that he was driving the vehicle at the time, and therefore his stop was illegal. But the, but the court said, because common sense is if you run the tag and the registered owner is suspended, you can infer that the registered owner is probably driving the vehicle. So it's not a probable cause stop because it's not more likely than not. It's just, it's a good inference from the officers based on training experience, more likely than, or that is reasonable for the officer to believe that he was driving the vehicle. So that's a good idea of what reasonable suspicion is faced versus probable cause.
Anybody else have any questions on this? Uh, Jason?
This is Jason Silvers. Chief, uh, in regards to Terry v. Ohio, um, I was under the impression that, uh, reasonable time of detention was from the point of detention, um, for 30 minutes. Is that, um, something that varies from just state to state or city to city? Or is it a U S, um, uh, overarching?
Here is why our jobs are so difficult. The courts have refused to, which is to our benefit and to our detriment, to establish in a time. So there is no time. There's no clock, uh, that says that this, when this time gets to this minute here, you have to let them go. It can be as short as 15 minutes and it could be as long as several hours. Case law has been buried across, it is, it is based on the facts at hand. So the officers have to understand what the concept of Terry is as opposed to directly memorizing what it is. So that's where it gets tough in teaching Terry, in that we have to keep up to date on case law and figure out, well, what are the things the courts are looking at that are going to give you more time? Or whether they looking at that's going to cause you to lose time? Basically, what we teach them is, is look, you're there to ask questions. And once you get to the point where you're not getting any more answers that continue to further your idea that this person is involved in a crime, you have to let them go or hurt them. So, but there is no established time. It's all, you know, and with one judge, what you did could be good with another judge, the exact same thing, and they could judge it not to be good. So that's where the balancing act is.
Thank you.
Uh, Bob Pay.
Yeah, Mr. Poppe. Chief, do, do we conduct, uh, no-knock warrants in Miriam?
We do not conduct no-knock warrants. You have to get those specifically asked for in search warrant that you're, that you're getting. And generally, uh, we have not, uh, asked for or received a no-knock warrant. It has to be an extremely special situation to get a no-knock warrant. You have specifically asked for it, and you have to convince a judge that there's, uh, a reason, viable reasons, uh, to issue a no-knock warrant. So they're very hard to get. They're very rare. I can't remember the last time we've ever done one.
Thank you.
Just in case you were wondering about checks and balances on whether or not we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. When we make an arrest, uh, on a search, uh, those, those documents go to the district attorney's office. That's one of the very first things they do, is determine whether there was an appropriate level of probable cause, uh, and whether the Fourth Amendment was violated. This is at the time, maybe after the arrest, but it's right after the arrest. And if they've determined that we shouldn't have made the arrest based on, on, uh, case law and the Constitution, uh, those people are not charged. And the same goes when you go to court. If there's a challenge in court, again, it's up to, to the defense attorneys to make their case, the judge to render opinions. Uh, so, uh, that's why it's so important that the officers do it right from the beginning, because no one wants to go through all the paperwork of an arrest and all that entails to the investigation, just to lose it on a, on the Fourth Amendment violation. Uh, one other thing too, I, I do know for a fact that we take this seriously. It hasn't been, it's been a few years ago, we actually terminated an officer for violating the Fourth Amendment of an individual on a, uh, arrest, uh, that was out of, out of our city, uh, but the officer should have known and did, and didn't exercise good judgment. Uh, he was terminated from the force, so we do take it pretty seriously. I'm going to go ahead and, uh, move to the next item, which is traffic complaints and speed enforcement presentation. Chief, if you'd like, go, go with that now?
Sure, I'm gonna press camera screen here again. You guys can see all my.
Maybe you get that cleaned up too by the next time you come.
Oh, I, I use everything that's on there. I would go crazy if I didn't have all my icons on there.
You only have like subfolders. Maybe you should check into that. You know how that works.
And I wouldn't be able to find anything.
Uh, Chief, I organize all my stuff on the right side.
Well, you know, I'm always been accused of being backwards sometimes. All right, so I was asked to explain to, uh, council how we handle traffic complaints. Cause I know you all receive a lot of complaints about traffic and, and I receive them and then they're filtered on down to patrol. So wanted to give you kind of an idea of how we look, how we handle them, how we look at them, uh, what our goals are, um, and some of the things that we face that, you know, uh, sometimes kind of hinder us from maybe addressing these issues in, in as timely fashion as I know our citizens would like us to. But, uh, I think we do a pretty good job of addressing them overall. So how do we go about addressing speeding complaints? So first we get a complaint from a citizen, um, and we document it. We actually have a traffic complaint list, uh, and we send it to patrol commander. Then we monitor the area that the complainers receive that. So we put out traffic counting devices to measure the flow of traffic and speeds. We use radar signboards, um, large ones that you've seen. Um, and then we have some new ones that fit onto the, uh, speed limit, uh, sign post. It's a little smaller, um, than the great big signboards that go out and, you know, on the side of the road. And we also use mechanical devices, uh, laid across the roadway. Those are those little hoses you see laid across. If you drive over sometimes, you probably wondered what those are. Those are traffic counting devices as well. We usually collect data between a one and two week period, depending on our methods that we use. Now, there's been questions asked about the new signboards that we've got, the ones that mount on the traffic pole. And sometimes they get up there and they're not on, and people think that the battery's dead or something. Essentially, put those up and, and on stealth mode, they are taking readings. They're just not flashing, so people don't realize they're there. So we get a week's worth of reading, the sign flashing, telling people they're speeding, and then we turn the sign on and we get another week worth of readings. That way we can see if the sign's having any effect on, uh, insulin traffic down, uh, but with it off or in stealth mode, we're getting a true, you know, what traffic is doing during that week's time. We then, the data is collected by our crime analyst. He analyzes, put it in, put it in nice, uh, little charts. We get to know how many cars are speeding and what times of the day. We also get a true traffic count and a number of cars. Uh, we know when the peak areas are, uh, when the traffic is highest. And then we use a couple of different methods to try to reduce the speeding on the road. First is educational. We leave those traffic signs up, or we put the great big signboards up and, you know, display signs, slow down, uh, you're speeding, um, you know, things like that. It tends to have a limited effect. They're usually good slowing people down for as long as the signs up. Um, the second is enforcement action. We direct our officers to go sit in the, these traffic control areas, uh, during the times of days when it is obvious that the greatest speeders are there. However, they're encouraged to sit there anytime that they, uh, of the day that they have availability to go sit and run into turf control areas. We do have several things that affect our ability to enforce any complaint area for any consistent period of time. So I know that when people phone in these complaint areas, they would like us up there every day of the week at the times that, you know, people are speeding. Unfortunately, I've got more traffic control areas than I have officers working at that particular time of the day. Currently, there's eight of them. I very rarely have eight people working during that, during those times of the day or anytime, to be honest. Second, the peak time violators are during morning and evening rush hours. Unfortunately, uh, our accident peak times also occur during these peak hours, but in different areas of the city. So here's a heat map.
Chief, can I interrupt you?
Yeah, go ahead.
You haven't shared your, uh, your slides, so, uh, if you could plug those in, cause this is a pretty visual side, slide. I think it's important, this would be the second one. You covered the first slide pretty well without it being the second one. We knew, need the visuals on it. Yeah, if we go to the next one. She covered, there you go. See, isn't that pretty? Look at that, that's pretty.
So this is a heat map. The blue lines are the traffic control areas that we have on our complaint list. So those are the streets that we currently look to enforce. The red dots are the red glowing areas. Those are where our traffic accidents are. As you look, our traffic complaint areas are nowhere near our accident areas. So when our accidents occur, that's where the officers have to go. And we need to do traffic enforcement in those areas as well because our goal is to reduce accidents. If you look at the charts on the right, um, you'll see the vehicle volume and crashes by hour. So you look at the sum of vehicles and you look at the sum of crashes, and you'll see that they both peak at the same times. And then if you look at the bottom, it's speeder volume and crashes. It's in our areas that we've collected data. And you notice the two maps look extremely alike. So our problem becomes is we're trying to enforce areas where our speeders are at, uh, during those times of day. We usually get interrupted by having to go work accidents. Not all the time, but that is just one of the, uh, many things that we are trying to handle, um, in controlling speeders in our complaint areas. So, you know, I think, you know, we do a pretty good job of, of educating the public, uh, getting the signboards up, um, and, and writing tickets in those areas. It's just that we can't consistently be in those areas for days and days on time because if I'm sitting, uh, on any one of those areas for numerous days in, in a row, I'm not sitting in some of the other areas that are being complained about. I'm certainly not sitting in the accident areas trying to reduce the number of accidents that we have in those areas. So, you know, I ask patients, when people call, we give them the numbers, we'll share the data, and we explain these things to, to citizens when they call and they ask, and we just ask for some patience. We get to those areas when we can, uh, we do the best we can. And I know we do have some effect on a limited basis. I just can't say how long that will last until we have to go back there. Any questions?
This is one of those topics that many of the council have received complaints about, uh, either as a council member or someone who was running for council. So Brian, did you have a question?
Uh, yes, um, we had a request from a number of citizens a few weeks ago for additional stop sign on Knox. I know I talked to Darren, I know I talked to you about Knox before and also former chief Daniel. So can we put another stop sign on Knox?
We don't determine where stop signs go. We, we have a traffic engineer and, um, you know, we, we put them where the traffic engineer says are needed based on the studies that they do. I don't, I don't have any idea whether or not traffic engineer would put one there in Knox. I severely doubt it, but I don't know what their criteria is, but I cannot, you know, just put one up because I think one goes there because citizens have to want to go there because you usually create more problems than you solve. I guarantee you, if I put one up somewhere where a traffic engineer says it doesn't need to go, you may slow people down, but then I'll get complaints on people running that stop sign. Cause well, in, in a, that'll be hap, what will happen in the long term is that people will realize that stop sign is there for no good reason, and they'll stop stopping at it because they're frustrated because there's no good reason for that stop sign to be there, and they'll just run it. And then the citizens will be calling because they're putting a stop sign, so I'll still be up there enforcing that stop sign, not speeders. So we have to be careful about where we put traffic control devices and, and, uh, and I think Chris has got some more insight on that as far as, you know, traffic engineers go.
Yeah, but we, Brian, we had, uh, we had the traffic engineer look at, uh, 57th and Knox, and they, they don't recommend a stop sign there. We've, we had a study and we've, we've shared the study. It's, uh, per APWA standards, I think is what the, the, the standards that the traffic engineers use. One, they have like five criteria of when you should or should not use a stop sign and to control speeding. It, I mean, it's, it's a, you, you shall not use a stop sign to control speeding, uh, that if there's a problem with speeding, then there needs to, and it needs to be addressed. There's a variety of other ways that you could have a conversation or you could, uh, perhaps affect the speed, change the behavior there, but putting a stop sign up is not one of them, at least per engineering recommendations of the engineer.
But did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Um, so I have noticed, uh, on Knox, there is one of those signs now that goes in stealth mode, um, and has all kinds of cool, um, little features where it flashes at certain speeds and all that. And I know that that's in the area, um, where, uh, the, um, the residents are asking for some kind of speed control. I have two questions. One, um, it looks like something is happening there. Would you be able to next meeting, um, or just even via email, shoot Brian and I an email and let us know what the plan is, um, for what's going on there? So if residents ask, we can tell them. Um, I, I guess that's directed at the chief or Chris, either one.
What is, what is happening there?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I know that, um, the residents submitted a, a letter and public comments. I know it's been a topic of conversation for a long time. I know we did the traffic study, um, and now the signs back up. And so I don't know if there, um, if there's a speed study going on, if it's long-term, what's happening. It's been up for a while now, um, and switched from northbound to southbound as well.
I, I know we're gathering data. I'll have to defer to the chief. I'm not aware that we're going to, uh, other than gather data that we're necessarily have anything in the works to address those concerns. I'll defer to the chief.
Well, we put the sign up where we taken the, uh, different direction than we had in our first study. We've already pulled data from it. Again, we found that, you know, we, there is some speeding on Knox, um, during rush hours. It's not as prevalent as I think, as most people think it is, cause I know the perception is, is that, you know, but the numbers on Knox itself is not, it's not, you know, look at them and go, oh my God. But the officers are going to be up there enforcing speeding during the, again, when they're available, call load, uh, notwithstanding with everything else, um, during rush hour. And, and we move these signs around. We're leaving this one up on Knox a little bit longer just because we switched directions. You all have approved another sign in, in the budget for next year, so we're going to have a second one of those signs. Uh, we have two signboards, uh, we try moving those around. Now the signboards, you know, I put those in residential areas, but they're hard to put in residential areas because they're big and you have to find a place where they have an indestructible site, trees getting away and stuff, and then so the radar part doesn't work. We use the signboards mainly for, uh, our major streets where our accidents are so we can slow people down there, educate. But we are, we are expanding our ability to educate, um, and we are, uh, doing the best we can to enforce and, and hopefully we're making, uh, as much of a difference as we can.
Ms. Hands?
Um, I, I would be really curious to know how often you are, um, stopping people in neighborhoods or writing tickets. I know from personal experience that my grandson got one in a residential area in Miriam. Didn't make me very popular, I can tell you. But, um, I'm just curious because my belief is that generally the people that you're going to end up stopping and ticketing are actually the people that live there. But I can, if I can talk to a resident and say, this is what, what's already gone on, it would be helpful.
That's a good point, and I can get to those numbers, but, so I have a philosophy on enforcement. I could have put officers up there for extended. I could have put officers up there for extended periods of times and several of them and just hit an area extremely hard. And have, you know, six overs, you know, and really make the point. However, what usually happens when you do that is you usually stop a lot of residents. And you usually get a lot of negative feedback and it usually causes more harm in your public perception than good. Um, so we try not to just saturate an area and write an excessive amount of tickets over a short period of time for those reasons. Um, we tend to try to get up there and make, make a scene with some lights on, write some tickets. Get the messaging out and, and then come back and check it to see how we're doing. Um, but we really don't just saturate an area and write a bunch of tickets. Cause we end up writing a lot of residents. You'd be surprised how many residents we write. And, uh, then you guys would be getting a lot more phone calls. Um, and I don't, so there's a balance there. I, I don't want to be that heavy handed for those reasons. Um, so yeah, you're right. That's usually what happens is people's kids or they get pulled over and get a ticket. And, and so we, we try to be reasonable in our approach.
But, but still, I would just like to know what, what those numbers look like, if there's a way to split that out.
Yeah, I'll see what I can get pulled for you.
Any other questions, Bob? Your mic's off, Bob.
Okay, thanks for letting me know that. Um, I'm curious to know on the stealth mode, uh, how, how much of difference it makes? When you take it off of stealth mode on that, that flashing sign? I mean, is it, I mean, are the, I guess the question ultimately is, are they effective? And from a personal experience in another city, I often find myself speeding over five and starts flashing at me. And I automatically slow down. So are those flashing si- uh, speed limit signs, uh, with, with the study that you've been conducting? When it's off, how fast are people speeding? And when it's actually flashing and letting them know their speeds, is it making a difference?
It, it makes a difference, it varies by street. So I think if you, it cuts it down by X number percentage, because it just depends on the location that it's at. It has some effect, you can see it, it's not huge. It's not like it's popping at 50%. And when the light's flashing versus when it's not flashing. So you don't see like the curve just dramatically crash. There's just a slight reduction of it. Um, the bottom line is, is most people have already been read by the radar before they realize the sign's flashing. So their speed's already been recorded. And it's the same thing when you send an officer up on the street. By the time you realize that there's an officer sitting there running radar, he's already locked you in. So, you, and you're going to get your ticket. So it's the same principle. But some people are quick enough to see the lights, the flashing lights, and they slow down. It's just not a huge, uh, curve reduction in any location, and they vary by location.
Uh, yeah, cause I, you know, I was curious if that's, if that's a, uh, you know, one of the methods that maybe we can put in those, those areas. I know it costs us, what, $3,035,000 for one of those signs, but if that.
Costs you more than that.
Effective or not, so.
Yeah, it costs you more than that because the signs aren't, they're not powered, they run batteries. So we have to have someone touch them on a regular basis. And so the more signs you put out, the more times they have to be touched by an employee. And so once you start getting, uh, multiple signs out there, then, you know. My, my one crime analyst that goes out there and pulls data and replaces the batteries and does whatever to it. That's going to be start taking up more of his time. And now you're starting to look at, you know, why is the chief asking for another employee? Because we have 15 signs out there. You, you know, it's, these things can get out of control if we're not looking at what's our end result and what's the benefit we're getting out of them. I'm not opposed to having more of those signs. I just don't think using them as permanent traffic control reminders in all areas is, is a good idea. It may be for a certain, certain stretch of areas. But then that opens up for you guys, you know, well, so and so's got one of those signs on their street. Why can't I have one on mine? And then it's, you know, those, those are, you know, Pandora's box things that we really have to look at and discuss in detail before we just are going all over.
And I can tell you, chief, that we already get that they have so, they have speed bumps over there. Why can't we get those here? So that is not a new argument for us. It's just that we, I feel like I would love to have something, I know there's no magic bullet, but something that I can tell them. That, that might have a little bit of effectiveness.
I might, uh, mention something, since you brought it up, might be a good segue into what I was going to talk about. Um, one of the things that we need to do as a council is to encourage the city to look at ways, uh, to reduce speeding through design. Uh, and to do that, whenever it is we are going to go through a street, uh, resurfacing. Uh, right now we have Knox, for examples, on our schedule to be resurfaced at some point in the future. And while that's expensive in itself, that might be a good opportunity for us to look at ways to insert traffic calming devices. To, with the intent to slow down the traffic. Now, each one of these traffic control devices comes with its own price tag. Uh, and I would caution everyone to understand that. Um, you've probably driven down streets, particularly in Oakland Park or Lenexa that has some of these devices in place, they do work. Uh, however, they impact the people who live there the most. Uh, they, they, uh, so you can end up trying to make people happy and end up making the residents that live there unhappy. Because they're the ones who are the victims of the traffic control devices more than anyone, because they drive it all the time. But they do work. If you want to see an example of a city or a, a street in our city, drive down Goodman, uh, south of, uh, I'm sorry, north of Johnson Drive. And you will see a number of traffic calming devices that were put in place for the exact same reason that we're having problems on Knox. That was a cut through street. We had continual problems with speeding, all kinds of complaints. We did traffic enforcement, it went away for a while, it came back. We decided to rebuild that street one day and the city administrator at the time just said, we're going to fix the speeding. And he put up every kind of traffic control device that's known to man. Uh, which are caused, have caused us problems from the day they went in to, to today in terms of snow removal and other things. But you know, one of the things it did do, it stopped the speeding. Now, I'm not saying that speeding didn't move to another street, but it doesn't happen on Goodman anymore. So there are ways. Now, that was an expensive street replacement project and I'm not talking about taking Knox and, and turning it into another Goodman. But there may be little things we can do. And that's when we need to do is when we start working on those streets. So that may be some hope you can give to residents in the future. Uh, because basically it's their tax money we're spending. If they want to, you know, want to spend more tax money, eventually that's going to cost them more. Uh, Mr. Caldwell, do you have a comment?
Yeah, you know, we pride ourselves here in Miriam on having good streets. Nice and smooth, you can drive real fast on them. Maybe we just need more potholes.
Well.
I say that in jest, but, you know, it is part of having good streets.
Yeah. No, that's, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. Any other comments about this? We wanted to give you this information to you to kind of arm you so that you, when you deal with residents, you can, maybe you park some of our challenges. Um, stop signs are not the answer. Uh, uh, one other thing that the chief didn't mention is when, when we have a, a city engineer or, or a traffic engineer come, go and study. An intersection like 57th and Knox and they say that that, that intersection does not warrant a stop sign based on their professional. Uh, opinion, which is backed up by the sciences that they study. And if we tell them, you know what, you know, we're getting a lot of people complaining and we think this is what we're going to do in order to make people happy. We put that stop sign in and then three months later, a little kid gets run over because somebody doesn't stop at that stop sign. Who do you think's going to get sued on that deal? I mean, who's going to be someone at fault for maybe the, the, the health or safety of some child that gets run over? Because a stop sign was put in where the engineer said it doesn't belong. So we do, we really do have to listen to what they say. Uh, we depend upon them to give us good advice. Sometimes it's not popular, but again, if you haven't been on the council very long, that's not a uncommon thing for us to be involved in from time to time. So we make the hard decisions sometimes, it's basically, that usually stem for the right reasons. So it's a tough, tough job. Uh, Whitney, do you have a comment?
Oh, quick, if we need, uh, if we want to ask when a street will be up for, you know, new mill or repaving or, you know, new design. Um, who should we go to? Just ask Chris.
Chris?
Yeah, you just, just shoot me an email and we'll, I mean, we, we, I mean, once you get outside the five year CIP, we have to go back and look historical and then kind of infer based on pavement index rating, what it is now, when we think it'll come. But I mean, yeah, we can get you a ballpark.
Cool, I remember we talked about that lifespan when we were talking about the street stormwater tax.
Sure.
Yeah, that's all, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Chief, don't run off. So we've got some more stuff for you coming up. Uh, we're going to move into trap into council items. Um, same rules apply on council interaction with questions and so on. And the first item has to do with the Uniform Public Offense Code, which happens to be the most popular, uh, topic in terms of our public comments. And I'd like to start this off by, before we begin with an update, to talk a little bit about the history and why we even do this. That I really think it's important to what it is we're going to be asked to do. The Uniform Public Offense wasn't always something that the city of Miriam had. In the old days, we had our own, uh, public codes and we would hire, uh, our city attorney to make changes as the, the changes were needed. Every year, the state would change a law and we'd have to go in and change the city ordinance to comply with it. We'd have to write it so that was exactly the same. And we'd have to figure out where the changes were, which ones we wanted to adopt and which ones we didn't want to adopt. And so every city in, in the state of Kansas had to go through this long laborious process just because of the, the state legislature decided to change the regulations on DUI or RAS. Or the, or the, or the amount on, on how much, you know, constitutes a felony for theft or whatever. Well, Kansas League of Municipalities for many years has provided a document that basically is researched by the attorneys that they hire. Uh, to take state laws as they change and, and put them into a document that includes all of the changes and the updates. In the law on an annual basis. And then they put this document out in a booklet. And it's called the Uniform Public Offense Code. And we've seen many, many changes, for example, in the DUI laws in the last 20 years. That have been instituted in the UPOC, Uniform Public Offense Code. And put in there so we don't have to worry about whether or not they're written correctly. Because our laws for the most part mirror state law. Now, this year, uh, we had an addition to the Uniform Public Offense Code. And I think it's 10.29. Uh, and this is kind of what's got everybody up in arms. A couple of things though I noted from our public comments that I think we need to take a look at. Uh, just a little bit off the subject here, but when we have public comments with people that come up to the microphone in the city hall. We require that they give us their name and their address for the record. So I'm not so sure we should be accepting written public comments with people, from people who, who we don't know where they live. Our city council is formed to serve the citizens of Miriam. If we're getting a lot of public comments from people who don't live in Miriam, I think that's relevant. I personally think that's relevant as the mayor. Now, I was about to say they don't have good comments and they're not, and their opinions are not important to us. But I would much prefer to hear from a Miriam resident about laws that are going to impact Miriam residents. Than people who don't live in our city or our county or even our state in some cases. I mean, I don't care, they can show up and say, hey, I live in Kansas City, Missouri, that's cool. They're, they're going to be welcome, that's one thing. But as relates to this item with, with regard to mask enforcement. This 10.29 has to do with an ordinance that says that if there's a public health, uh, regulation, uh, that exists. This new ordinance, and again, I'm paraphrasing this, probably butchering it up. But basically our municipal ordinance will allow us to enforce these county ordinances as it relates to public, uh, health. You probably want to know, why is this in here? Well, I'll tell you, when COVID hit, uh, we were, uh, given a, a large number of, of, I guess, challenges about what we can do to, to keep our community safe. Masks used was one of them. Uh, clo- business, certain businesses were closed, as you might remember. It was determined that you could only be open unless if your business was deemed essential. We had a number of businesses in our county that decided they weren't going to pay any attention to that, would open up anyway. And many of the cities, while I don't think Miriam was one of them. Were struggling with, with vape shops and massage parlors and places like that. They decided to just disregard the public order and stay open. And the only people that were around that could enforce that was the county. And the cities, while they are the ones that got the brunt of the, the complaints, had to tell them, there's nothing we can do about that. There's no city ordinance that, that we can enforce that would force them to, to, to come into compliance with these state rules. So apparently, the League of Municipalities listened to a number of those complaints. And decided to include in this Uniform Public Offense Code. A new code that has to do, do with public health laws being enforced on the city level. Now, we have a group of people that for some reason think that we are going to go around and enforce the mask ordinance. There's nothing in this Uniform Public Offense Code that talks about masks that I know of. And please correct me, chief or whomever, uh, Brian Dank or anyone else, there isn't anything. That happens to be a public health regulation, as there are many, but they're not re- represented specifically. So a lot of these people have taken this change in the law, which we may or may not approve. And taken it to its furthest extreme in the fact that this is going to give us the right to go around and start writing people tickets for not wearing their masks. I don't know of anybody who wants to do that, to be honest with you. Uh, we got a number of complaints. And when I say we, I mean, I, I sit in on a monthly meeting of police chiefs and this was a big thing. People were calling up and saying, hey, I went by the park the other day and there's some people out there walking around without their masks on. And they wanted the police officers to go out and enforce it. They don't have the authority to do that. I don't think they want the authority to do that. That's it, since I got from the police chiefs. You know, that's a personal choice, just like these people are saying. Now, while it's out in maybe in the middle of the park or outside when you're walking down the sidewalk, that's one thing. But when you're in somebody's business and that business requires masks and these people refuse, that's kind of a different thing. So before we start thinking about all the comments that we got, the fact that these people think that we're now communists because we're enforcing the rules set by the governor on public health. Uh, bear in mind that it's discretionary. I'm pretty sure our police chief will tell you, he's not going to be able to take a lot of time. We, and we're dealing with speeders we can't even get, okay? Cause we don't have enough people. I don't think we're going to be spending time on people who don't wear face masks. Now, I will tell you, that being said, it's not unlike, I would not be at all surprised if I don't get complaints about me encouraging people not to wear face masks. And I'm not doing that. Uh, but still, uh, let's, let's get real about this. I don't, I'm kind of up, up in the air, I'm whether or not 10.29 should even stay in the UPOC. Uh, we operated without it, uh, it's going to create all kinds of problems, so I don't know, we need to think about this. But there are, there are going to be some people that think that it's absolutely needed. There's going to be people that think that's absolutely not needed. So that, all that being said, I will now let Chief Aglos and talk to us about the updates of Uniform Public Offense Code.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, I, I am, I was impressed by the number of public comments there and I, I. It did not bother me, actually, I think it's encouraging. I like it when our citizens become involved, uh, and look at laws for being passed. Uh, I wish they would be that more often, in my personal opinion. Um, so I, I will set aside 10.29, I will bring it up last. Cause I know that's probably going to be the topic of conversation, so I will go over the rest of the changes in the UPOC. What things are in there, what things are being asked to remove, any new additions, that type of thing. Um, so what has changed in the UPOC? Um, well, they added a new definition for explosives, nothing major in that. Um, uh, 5.7 was a big change in that it actually brought it up to what the city council had prior. And, and prior pass in our city code. So they raised the tobacco age from being able to, uh, uh, sell or furnish tobacco to minors from 18 to 21, which brought it up to the same level as our city ordinance. Uh, so as such, um, in order to keep in, uh, it, it in a UPOC, we recommend in that we just delete it. Uh, repeal it from our C code, because it's no longer necessary now that the state law is, uh, in line with our city ordinance. Um, we deleted some sections from the UPOC, so we're not adopting those. We deleted some sections from the UPOC, so we're not adopting those. And if if you approve the ordinance, 6.21, 6.22 involve hunting ordinances are in there. Uh, the reason we're going to delete those or repeal those on the UPOC is because we would, in the same ordinance that you were going to pass, we're asking for hunting ordinance. And I'll get into that. Why we're asking for that, what it entails. Um, but those are the reasons those two are being removed from the UPOC because they're, they'll be redundant and necessary. You'll see that 9.9.1 through, uh, 9.9.6, those were removed last year from the UPOC because we passed city ordinances that were more in line with the state law. So in in order to keep continuity with that, we're just going to remove them from the UPOC and keep our city ordinances already there. Section 10.5b3, uh, is another is another, uh, part of the UPOC that's being removed due to the hunting ordinance if it passes with this ordinance. So we're removing it. You, the League of Municipalities removed several sections out of 10.1 uh, and completely eliminated 10.2 and 10.3. Those sections involve, uh, the possession of firearms, whether it's by an intoxicated person or a whole bunch of other different combinations thereof. The league, um, decided to pull those because they are actually in conflict with KSA 12 dash 16, uh, 124, which basically prohibits municipalities from enforcing, uh, firearms possession, uh, regulations, and or creating new ones. So the league felt by passing the UPOC with those in there, you're actually technically violating state law. Talking to our city attorney and our prosecutor, they agree with that assessment. Now, that does not mean I can't enforce those provisions. Actually, I still can. I have to charge it through district court. We've already talked to the DA's office. They are more more than willing to accept those charges. So we're not losing anything. We just can't write them tickets and charge it through municipal court. They'll just be sent out uh, for charging at the district court level. So we're not losing anything. It's just our ability to charge to city courts is being removed. Other than that, that's the, uh, major thing, uh, changes in the UPOC. The criminal hunting ordinance, we added because we just, I had someone call wanting to know if they could squirrel hunt in Marion. This was problematic for me in that when I started looking at our our ordinances, there was a loophole in that because of our discharge of firearm within city boundaries had a loophole saying that if you were hunting with a hunting license, um, during hunting season, that that part of the law no longer applied. Our city is too densely populated, um, for where someone hunting squirrels in their backyard. Um, I think it would be too dangerous, uh, and their administrative agreed, which is why we decided to split into ordinance that, you know, having people discharge firearms at squirrels in trees is not a good thing. Even if they're using a 22, that round will still travel over a mile instead of a mile. So I just don't see how you can safely hunt in in a densely populated city. We don't have acreage where people can go hunting and not, you know, put anybody at risk. So that's why we added our criminal hunting ordinance to prevent any type of hunting. As it's detailed out, which precipitated the removal of the rest of the ordinances. Finally, 10.29. To be honest with you, when I read that ordinance, I didn't even think of face masks. That's what people are going to associate it with. I will tell you from my perspective, I can probably see extreme situations where having something like this on the books is necessary. Meaning you have, you know, beginning of this COVID thing where you have businesses like the mayor brought up that were refusing to abide by the order. And we didn't know what the, what this COVID was and what the infection rates were and trying to shut them down and not having the ability to do that. I tell you right now, we are not going to go out and enforce individual mask, uh, ordinances. Like, one, I don't have the time. You guys see what my, what my weekly briefings look like? Trouble dealing with DUIs, uh, domestic violence calls, uh, drug induced, uh, battery calls um, and the like. I don't have the time to go out and write anybody a ticket for not wearing their face masks. Our approach from this, at the beginning of this COVID, was education. And to be honest with you, if we had, if we got a call about somebody violating some health order, whether it's a business or whether it's, uh, gatherings and people not wearing masks, we stop and educate and we are able to gain compliance through voluntary means. When you, when you stop and talk with people and tell them lying, you know, we're asking to do something, they and they tend to do it. Education is is where we've been on this. Um, I don't, and I don't plan on using 10.29 to go out and enforce mask ordinances. It's not in my nature. Officers don't want to do it. Um, so, you know, I don't, I didn't even thought about masks when when I saw this in there. But I I understand where the citizens are concerned. But it's 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 not on my radar. I'll be happy to answer any questions about any of the sections. Got a whole bunch of them.
Mr. Neal, would you go first, please?
Okay, um, actually, uh, I have some questions about the section 1029, but I also have some questions about, um, the, uh, you know, uh, the firearms. Um, so something you said in your presentation, and I thought I'd do that first since the other one's probably going to be more, uh, relevant. Um, you mentioned, chief, that, uh, we're not losing anything because we can charge at at district court level. And I'm kind of, I guess I want, I I don't quite understand exactly what you meant there. You know, I recognize that the state has put in some really restrictive, you know, uh, language kind of tying the hands of of cities and counties as far as reg, you know, as far as really anything to do with with firearms, including stopping intoxicated people who are, you know, wandering around with firearms and, you know, that, which seems to me common sense, the old language that seems kind of common sense that was in 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 the previous, um, UPOC. But what do you mean by, um, we're not losing anything because we can charge at district court? Is there, are there statutes that, um, that that cover some of these things? I know that you can charge if someone, you know, points a weapon at you or shoot or actually shoots you or commits a crime with one. But, um, these other more preventative types of regulations that used to be in here, um, were you talking about some way of charging those or were you talking about the, you know, like somebody threatened someone with a firearm? I'm just kind of, I want to understand.
That's a great question. And and there's there's where the confusion lies, I think. And it's 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 great to explain it. So all laws that come from the state have a state statute. Those laws are enforceable through district courts in the state of Kansas. So if state Kansas says, I I can't remember, I think it's 10 or 12 judicial districts, and those are the enforcement arm for state statutes. However, the the state also allows municipalities to enforce city ordinances and misdemeanors, which is where the UPOC comes into place. So if we wanted to enforce a battery, we could charge it through the state, which would be in our district court, Johns County District Court. Or the city passes an ordinance saying that basically that would mirror the state statute says this is enforceable within the city limits of Marion. You can't batter another person. So that gives us an option of taking these misdemeanors and traffic violations out of the hands of district court because district court is generally very busy with felons, um, and and the like. So it allows municipalities to charge these in municipal court and let municipal court judges handle those level of offenses. So that's why you have a UPOC, which are misdemeanors, or they're all misdemeanors in there. So we're just taking state statute misdemeanors, the most readily charged by municipalities. We're putting them in a UPOC. We pass it as an ordinance. So we are allowed to write tickets on it. And our and our city court can prosecute those. But because it's a state statute, if you don't pass a city ordinance enforcing it, I can still enforce it through municipal court. Any state statute is enforceable through municipal court or through a district court. So I don't, because it's been removed from the UPOC and we can't pass the ordinance because of the state law that that doesn't allow municipalities to enforce or pass new laws regulating possession of firearms, the laws that are in place right now that are state statute like 10.2, which is the possession of a firearm by an intoxicated person is still enforceable through district court, and we will enforce it through district court. So as of today, ordinance was chargeable through city court. When you pass the UPOC with it being removed, tomorrow, if I arrest someone for that, it goes through district court. Person's still going to get charged. I'm still going to do the same thing. It's just the court is changing from municipal to district. So we're really not losing the ability to charge these people with the crime. We're just losing the ability to charge it through municipal court. Does that make sense?
Again, I, so is there something in state law that, um, would take the place of section 10.2 possession of a firearm while intoxicated?
Yeah, so 10.2 is actually, well, it has a state statute associated to it. So 10.2 is just written with the state statute. The state statute's still in effect. Well, moving is our ordinance to it to, uh, apply it to the city of Marion and enforce it in municipal court.
Okay, yeah, that that was my my question. I I, it just seemed like it's a logical thing still to have on the books. So if it's still on the books at the state level, then I'm I'm good with that. Go ahead and ask somebody else. I want to come back on the 1029 though.
Let me think. I think we had, uh, Chris Hands and then Whitney. Chris?
Um, I just want to clarify, um, in the criminal hunting, which sounds, which is different than hunting of criminals, right? Anyway, um, the word trap and then it refers down to public nuisance animals. Having just gone through a trapping incident in my little patio area, I'm just curious about that language and if we need to say something about live trap instead of trapping.
Well, we've, yeah, we put an exception there. So people could, you know, if you want to hire, rid a critter because you have a squirrel issue and so they could trap squirrels. We didn't want that to be removed as a result of the criminal hunting ordinance. That's why there's an exception in there for that. I do believe, and I'll have to check on this, but I I don't believe, like, kill traps are allowed. I believe another part of ordinance for cruelty animals may cover that. We are talking specifically live traps here for, you know, the whole of of the which were allowed. So it has to be licensed.
Okay, thanks.
But, does that answer your question?
Ms. Edrich?
Hello, Whitney Edrich here. Um, one, well, my first question is, um, what's the penalty for a Class C violation?
Have it right here in front of me, but I think it's a $500 fine max and 90 days in jail. I think we're the, uh,
Is the max?
Is the max.
Um, and this is, but you can follow up with me if you don't know off the top of your head, but what other misdemeanors are Class C violations?
To go through the list, but they're very minor violations. Like, he's also, he's a classic, or salt, written somebody whereas, agrees you can actually get them. But your Class C is your, the the lowest level violation there is. There's, you know, or seller of them, I don't know my head which of which anymore, or tickets anymore. So remember the class of violations.
Um, I have more questions, but we can keep going to everybody else. So we can come back if necessary.
Jason?
I just want to, um, add on to, uh, Chris Hand's comment. This is Jason Silver's. And, uh, chief, you broke up there that when you were finishing her comment. So you might have answered this. But we also have been hearing from residents in regards to trapping, uh, feral cats and getting them spayed or neutered and then returning them to the neighborhood. Would that type of trapping be, um, illegal based on on this new addition?
I think I have to let Ryan answer that, let him interpret it. I'm not 100%. I don't think so, but maybe Ryan's got a little bit.
Yeah, I'd have to, I would have to go cross-reference that section. So we, our animal control ordinance identifies what they identify as nuisance animals. Um, and it's in that section that I referenced. So I'd have to pull that up. Um, and I I can do that here in a minute. Um, I I did want to jump in on the masking piece. You know, the mayor's comment was right that this section of the UPOC does not reference masking. And I kind of, when I got these emails from Chris this afternoon, I kind of went through and tried to evaluate whether the masking order would be enforceable under the section 10.29. And it's my opinion that it would not. The masking, uh, dictate, um, was adopted by the Kansas governor through, um, through executive order 20 dash 52. Then the, after it was adopted, the Kansas Attorney General issued an opinion because in the back and forth of all the COVID regulations between the governor and the legislature, the legislature carved out the ability for counties to opt out of any mandatory provision that the that the governor adopted. Um, and so the action that was considered by the county was not, um, was not a written order, which is what 10.29 speaks to. A written order of the county health officer, board of health, or director of health. Basically, what the county did is they looked at the governor's ordinance and determined they did not want to opt out of the mandatory statewide dictate. Um, that is, that would would not fall within the definition of what is enforceable under 10.29. So I'm not sure where people were getting their information that 10.29, uh, basically dealt with masks in in our particular situation. Now, if the county health officer issued a written order, um, then that could be enforceable under 10.29. But the way that the current mask mandate came down and is in effect, it's my opinion at least, that that does not qualify under 10.29 as to a violation that would be enforceable. I would also say that, you know, but the legislature, when they adopted House Bill 2016, back in June of this year, before that, there was a provision on the books for um, criminal enforcement of, uh, of county emergency management orders. They then, in June of this year, the legislature came in and amended, what is it, KSA 48 dash 939, which was the prior provision which used to allow for criminal enforcement. Uh, and now it's a civil remedy that just the district attorney and the attorney general's office has authority to enforce. So under the state statutes, um, that criminal piece on enforcement of county admin, which had, which had been there forever, a long time. Because that statute doesn't just relate to COVID-19, that relates to all emergency management operations. And so they changed that to civil enforcement with a fine. And so they changed that to civil enforcement with a fine. Now, a lot, I think a lot of the people who submitted comments today thought that we were making not wearing a mask illegal. That's not true. It is in fact illegal in Johnson County because the count, the governor issued the mask mandate. The county did not exempt itself. Whether or not we adopt a criminal statute for enforcement, doesn't mean that violating of the mask executive order issued by the governor is somehow making it not illegal. It's still in violation of the law. It's just how it is that you're going to enforce it. And the enforcement actually in the civil penalty has a higher civil penalty than what the chief said under the new state law. You can fine somebody up to $2,500. So I just thought I would provide that background.
Ms. Hands?
Yes, I'm really curious where, because LKM does this. We can't, we aren't possibly the first city to approve the UPOC. Has everyone else had the same kind of pushback and?
Well, I don't know the answer to that completely, but I did a little internet check while we were checking on this. It seems that other cities have been approached in the exact same manner. As though this is a concerted effort by maybe some people who believe that this is some attempt by cities to somehow circumvent people's constitutional rights. And again, you know, I'm sure if you look at the intent of this, it's not to do that. It's just to deal with some of these complaints. As I said earlier, that we got early on with businesses or, or groups that simply decided not to engage in doing what they need to do. Again, that's probably debatable on whether that's true or not. That's probably the only reason why UPOC has included this ordinance is to try to cover those areas. At the end of the day, if we didn't, if we exempted this particular section out, I don't think it would really have a dramatic impact on our city. Because the county can still enforce the rules. As Mr. Dink said, they're still in violation. It'd just be a matter of the sheriff's department taking or submitting these cases to district court. I will tell you though, one thing. If you're found in violation in district court of violating one of these things and you're fined, the fine you're going to get, the cost to you as an individual is going to be considerably more than what you would get if you got it from the city of Merriam. Because you get a ticket with a fine. You got court costs and all kinds of issues with this thing ends up in the county. So I mean, there's, there's a downside to everything. It's just something the council needs to consider. There's nothing to say that we couldn't insert this down the road if we do, we're studying, decide it's appropriate. If you want to get past this and just exempt this, that's something that's a matter of just writing, writing it into the ordinance. And I might need to get a little backup from Mr. Dink on that. I don't think it's difficult to exempt this particular portion from the UPOC.
No, you can do that.
Mayor, if I could also just interject real quick. Hey, I did look to answer Jason's question. I did look and the, it would not prohibit the trapping of feral cats as, as is spelled out in chapter eight of section 880 of the Code of Ordinances. So you could still trap feral cats and neuter and release.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Mr. Silver?
Two things. How do I get my hands on one of these UP, UPOC books? Because I actually wrote someone in Topeka trying to get my hands on one. Never got a response. That was about three months ago. And then my next question is, these ordinances, like, let's just talk about 1029, which I'm sure no one wants to talk about anymore. That's an ordinance. Can you explain the difference between like an ordinance and a law? Because like I know, wearing a seatbelt, not smoking in a public building, not carrying a firearm into a public building are laws that are state laws that are enforceable and the police are very happy to enforce. How is this different?
So ordinances are passed by cities. So every, every law that the city allows me to write a ticket for is an ordinance. Can't write a ticket in the city of Merriam without having an appropriate ordinance. Now, the vast majority of our ordinances mirror some state law. However, there are a few city ordinances in the books that are just passed on a local level. Meaning outside the boundaries of Merriam, they have no enforcement action that can be taken. Because there's no state statute that controls them. So you can modify, the perfect example is 5.7. Although there was a state statute that controlled the furnishing of tobacco, the city of Merriam made it more restrictive and made it 21. Whereas the state was 18. So that was a city ordinance that we were enforcing. But outside the city of Merriam, the state was, if you wanted to charge that, it would be 18. Unless the city had a city ordinance passed to enforce that. So we work off of, the police work off three levels of laws, federal, state, city ordinances. I can charge either one depending on which is appropriate, based on what the violation is. We prefer if it's a misdemeanor or less. Because some city ordinances are not even misdemeanors. That we charge those to municipal courts, which is why we have ordinances.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. How do I get my hands on one of those books?
I believe Julie, if I'm not mistaken, that once it's passed, it'll, it'll become available as a PDF on our webpage. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Jason, if you do a internet search for Kansas 2020 UPOC, several cities, I know Mission has it on their website. So you can go to those cities and just upload it.
Great, thank you very much.
Ms. Reale?
Yeah. Thank you. So I guess, I don't know what the sense of the council is about 10, 1029. I also had a follow-up back on the criminal hunting. It shall be unlawful for any person to shoot, hunt, trap, or pursue any bird or animal within the city of Merriam. Is, and with the except, you know, with the exemption of section 880. Shoot, hunt, trap. And I haven't looked at section 880. That's probably part of the problem. But, you know, obviously, you know, when you have animals like squirrels and other types of animals that are just destructive to your property, raccoons, for example, things like that. Is, is there no alternative other than just, what's the alternative for dealing with them? Do you have to hire the trapper or do you have to, or can you? I mean, what, what, what are the, you know, what, what are residents left with as tools to, you know, to deal with those kind of nuisance animals within this, within the city, under this, with, if we, if we adopt this particular language?
We can still live trap, isn't that right, Darren?
Yeah, we added a section in that because I sent an email to Ryan because their original version didn't have anything in there to allow trapping for pest control issues. And we added an exemption in there. So I believe in what I looked at and was right. Someone is trapping for the purposes of property owner because they are having, you know, destruction due to, you know, rodents, squirrels or whatever, that that's allowable under our ordinance. So trapping as it relates to the hunting part of it is, is you can't go out and fur trap with a license and set life traps to capture for rare animals and things like that. So unless Ryan needs to correct me in my assumption, I think if you are just trapping because you have a critter problem, a pest control issue, that is okay. Because that was the intent, putting that subsection in there.
With a further question related to shoot. You know, most people think of a firearm, you know, shooting a firearm. But I can recall having taken out, you know, some, some, some critters with a, with a slingshot, you know, in, in days past. What, what does shoot mean?
We already have
An air rifle.
So that was the irony of the problem when I started investigating this. We already have ordinances on the book to prevent the discharge of the BB gun, bows and arrows, and the like within city limits outdoors. We did not have anything that prevented you from hunting with a rifle outdoors during hunting season with a hunting license, which is why we're here today. So, because I was appalled when I couldn't tell the gentleman, no, you can't. The city cannot prevent you from shooting squirrels in your backyard during squirrel season. However, I highly recommend not doing it because it's dangerous and your neighbors may not appreciate it. So I were here.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. So the other question has back to do with, you know, 1029. When I read that and I, I know that we have this tremendous controversy in the public space about mask wearing. And I see, you know, a number of sides of that. I also realized that, you know, public health orders go way beyond just this mask issue. And so my questions mostly were answered already, but it would seem to me, and here's, here's my question. Public health orders issued by the county, are they, you know, now let's not talk about masks, let's speak something else. Are those, is there an enforcement mechanism at the county level already? Or is, I mean, I just kind of was hoping for some, some clarity and background on, on some of that.
So yes, that is the statute that I referenced previously. There used to be an enforcement mechanism for violation of Kansas statute, which kind of going back to what the chief was talking about before, could be charged in district court. They, again, in June of this year, the legislature changed that from a criminal violation to a civil violation that can be enforced either by the attorney general's office or the district attorney for, in this case, Johnson County. And that is a civil penalty.
So it's always, so that's, any public health order would fall under that. There is no county level, you know, county sheriff's department can't, you know, charge someone for violating the county health order. Is that what you're saying? Other than going through the civil remedy that you just mentioned?
Right, not, not anymore. I mean, before June 8th of this year, yes. But now it's converted to a, to a civil penalty.
So essentially if we take this out, then we are relying on that mechanism. Should we want, should we run into a need to enforce some other public health order that comes along that, that may, may or may not relate to masks, but maybe more, you know, germane in terms of kind of people wanting us to, you know, to enforce it, we would, we would have to go that route. Is that correct?
Yeah, and let me offer this. I mean, I did an email to Chris and Chief just before the meeting on this. I mean, what we're talking about is an enforcement of the county's orders. And you, if, if we took 1029 out, then that state statute would still exist, which allows for the, basically the chief law enforcement charging authority in Johnson County, who's the district attorney, to determine whether or not he's going to enforce the county's orders. Now, just because it's a county order, doesn't mean, and this is what Chief was talking about before, our officers can still take action on, and, and probably regularly do on matters that are not within the UPOC or not an ordinance violation, but are in fact a violation of state statute, which then get referred on to the district attorney's office for review and charging. This would operate in the same way.
Mr. Caldwell?
So just, I want to check my understanding. If we took this out, the health order is still the health order. The police would still enforce it. But the enforcement would go to district court instead of municipal court. Is that correct?
Nothing would change. So basically what is, is what's happening today will happen tomorrow if you don't pass this ordinance. Nothing changed because that's how we're doing it now.
So it's, it's, it's the issue of whether it goes to municipal court or it goes to district court. But the enforcement is the same.
I think there, there's one caveat to that. And this is from my interaction with the Police Chief Association. Is that there's this belief that it's since it's a county health ordinance, it should be enforced by the sheriff's department, not the police department. So they may call upon the sheriff to enforce it as opposed to us because they have county authority. So I'm not sure that the police department could enforce a county regulation because I'm not sure we have the authority to, but the county sheriff's department could. Now, and I think I know where you're going with this. If we decide not to put this in there, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference one way or the other. And let's say six months from now, it becomes painfully obvious that we need to have this in the ordinance. Guess what? We can put it in there. I just, I think that there's a lot of people that are concerned about the overreach of government. They've taken this as their mechanism of concern. And turn this into something a little larger than it probably really is in real life. Yeah, there is the potential, but realistically not really. It may be easier for us just to strip this out and pass this ordinance and get on with it. Now, if we decide we need it in the future because there's an obvious need, guess what? We can put it back in there. Does that seem reasonable? Mr. Engel, how, how do you feel about that?
It's up to the will of the council. We wouldn't have put it in there if we didn't think it was a good idea to be in there.
And I'm going to ask again, so have other of our, of our neighbors, have they left this in the UPOC?
We'd have to get back with you on that. I, we, I don't track the UPOC through our neighbors. I just run it through our community. I'd have to look and see and get back with the council.
Well, I, I'm suspecting if they didn't put it in there and the league had recommended it, that you would have heard. That's just my guess through, through the police or through the administrators.
I am not aware of it not having been passed. I would defer to the city attorney or the police chief if they've heard that it has not been passed.
I haven't heard anything, to be honest with you. If this was an issue as this was passing through all these city councils, I would have thought that I would have heard it from the other police chiefs. And to be, I haven't heard anything about it. So I don't know what that means other than I haven't heard one way or the other.
It would seem to me like this item has been hijacked by a misunderstanding of fundamentally what the whole intent was. But again, I would agree with the mayor. We, if, if it's the will of the council to remove it and that makes it easier to pass the whole UPOC, we can absolutely do that.
Well, officially, I would just as soon go ahead and leave it in. Because I believe that's what other, other municipalities would have done. And it's supposed to be a universal code, so.
I, yeah, the only additional thing I would say is, you know, there's a lot of orders that the public health officer issues. You know, they can issue, you know, business specific type of public health orders, which this allows for prosecution in municipal court on. So I, you know, the, the narrow interpretation of it to just masking, when it's my opinion So I, you know, the, the narrow interpretation of it to just masking, when it's my opinion, it doesn't even apply to the mask mandate. I would tend to agree with Chris. I think it's been hijacked by someone with an agenda.
One other example, you know, discretion. We, we oftentimes look at discretion as something that isn't important, that's extremely important. You know, right now, and for many, many years, it's been illegal to speed in the city of Marion. So technically, one mile over the speed limit is speeding. We don't write tickets until they're doing five, 10, eight, you know, 13 miles over. We purposely watch people at three miles over the speed limit drive right on by, because we recognize that, you know, there could be differences in speedometers, and that's barely speeding. So there's discretion. We use discretion all up and down, when it's reasonable. And that's what we depend upon our police department to, to know the difference about, and give them the authority. If we pass this, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty certain that Chief McLaughlin and his people are not going to be spending a whole lot of time on mask enforcement. And you know what? If I heard that he was, given all the speeding that we have, among other things, I would question his ability to be the police chief. So he has offer, I don't really worry too much about that, but that's why, again, at the end of the day, this really doesn't make a whole lot of difference. We probably spent the last 45 minutes talking about something that really doesn't make that much difference. So I know it probably, maybe this be a burning issue for some people, but I don't have any indication that it's going to be, so. Whitney, do you have something?
Um, yeah, I, I just want to comment. We follow public health orders every day across a wide variety of issues. And public health is not confined to a single issue. This gives cities more flexibility when it comes to enforcement. And I agree, I think that this issue has been hijacked by a group of people who want to politicize public health in this specific instance. And I would encourage them to read the CDC guidelines online, which address most of their concerns. And, and the broad language of this is almost like a fail safe in case there is another emergency, or something happens that we can't even think of yet, which is 2020, there's still time. Something could happen.
Mr. Deal?
Yeah, I, I wanted to say, I've really been, you know, kind of been struggling with this. The, the, the main problem that I have is that we, realistic policy, as you said, is going to require discretion. And people, I think, are focusing too much on, or at least the, certain people that have raised concerns are, are focusing on the mask wearing, and that's part of this whole, you know, political discussion that's going on. And, and what we're really talking about is an ordinance that covers a whole bunch of other things that involve public health. And so struggling to try to find a balance, I think we're going to have to go with some level of discretion, and still have the ability to enforce, you know, the other public health, you know, issues that may come up from time to time with, with some discretion. And if somehow we're, we're not exercising that discretion unreasonably, you know, going after people, then I think then we, that's time we would have to come in and, and change, as you said, the personnel are doing the enforcement, if that's, we're not using the discretion that's, that's there. I, I've struggled with this, and I also, you know, the mask issue is, is a big issue. My son's a physician and works with COVID-19 patients. And there's also a lot of imprecise and misinterpreted information out there about mask wearing as well. So it, it's, it's difficult to know what to do. Obviously, we can, if we took this out, we could still enforce, you know, if we needed to. But, you know, part of me says, you know, why take away that tool if we are also going to use discretion, which the chief has and mayor have, have said that they're going to do. I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm still struggling, but I think that, you know, I'm okay with leaving it in here.
Mr. Debold?
Again, I, I struggle with it a little bit too, but I think some of the comments that we heard early, obviously, everybody's entitled to their opinion and, and their beliefs, and, and that's one of the things that makes us, makes us great. But to me, based on what I've heard from Chief McLaughlin, from our city attorney, from our mayor, is that they still have a choice. If they decide to come to Marion and shop, spend their money, which we heard multiple threats that they wouldn't do that, that, that our police aren't going to be standing on a corner and, and arresting them. They still have a choice. We still have that choice. We have not taken that away from, by, by leaving this in. I don't think we've taken it away from them. Now, it is a county deal, so I guess they're taking a chance with the county if they choose not to do so. Or they choose to not participate in a business that would turn them away. So to me, there's a choice. There's still a choice there. You know, again, I, I don't like wearing them, but I wear them, I choose to wear them because I want to go to Home Depot. I want to do those things. So that's what was there, and I do it. You know, again, I think, again, the choice is there. That, that's my thought. And I, and I think leaving it in there, and I think it's, I also think it's got way beyond masks. I think this is good for that serious thing that would be a more of a, well, cause I'm not a medical professional, but a super spreader, a huge party, a business not following the guidelines that are set down, that are just common sense guidelines for this pandemic, or as, as Whitney mentioned, what's coming next. You know, so again, it's there. I don't think we've taken anything away from both. You still, they still have a choice. That's my thought.
Mr. Engel?
Yeah, we've confirmed that Mission approved UPOC, including section 1029, and Westwood approved it with 1029. Hayes, Kansas approved it with 1029. Leavenworth removed 1029. That's kind of what we've been able to dig up so far.
Sorry, Chris, let me interrupt you. Leavenworth approved it with 1029 included.
So, okay, so all, all four of those, so, so all the ones that we found in Kansas thus far have included 1029?
Edwardsville was the only one who has-
Edward, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah. Edwardsville pulled it out, not Leavenworth. Thank you. And, and again, I would, but before we, I would just, this doesn't, this can be a conversation about masks, if that's what we want to turn it into, but that's not really what this is designed to be, but I will just interject that, but talk amongst yourselves.
Well, I, I mean, we could talk all night, but I do have to work tomorrow. And Bob, are you going to add anything, or do I need to? Yes, go ahead.
I was just wondering if we, if we could move on, Mayor, in reference to making a motion and see where it lands. I'd like to move that the council waive the customary first reading of the ordinance adopting the 2020 uniform public offense code.
Whitney would like to second one.
Mr. Mayor, I second that much.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Naff?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Debold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hans?
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Mr. Pape, would you like to make another motion?
I would, I would love to make another motion, Mayor. This is, but Pape, I'd move the council approve an ordinance adopting the 2020 uniform public offense code.
Do I have a second?
Oh, this is Chris Hans, then I'll second it.
May, motion made and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Naff?
No.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Debold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hans?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Motion passes seven one.
Very good. Thank you all for the discussion. Anyone, I don't think anyone who actually made any of the public comments, with the exception of one or two, actually has tuned in to see how their comments may have impacted us. But hopefully, if they had, they would have seen that we had discussion about this, and I think it was good discussion. Let's move into community center update. Meredith, could you give us an update on how things are going?
Yes, I can. I'm going to share my screen with you. All right, so this is my standard monthly update that I do for everyone. And this is, I think, probably the second to the last update, excuse me, that you'll be getting from me on this project, because we're almost done. And, but we continue to remain on budget for this project. My hope is that at the next update I give you in November, I'll be able to provide some more details about where we've come, not specifically with the budget. We're just waiting to pay, pay final invoices, so we're getting closer to knowing those actual numbers. And, but overall, we do remain on budget for this project. And we also have hit the second, or hopefully the final milestone for this project. The indoor pool opened officially last week, and so we are very close to formally wrapping this project up. And if you haven't been over to take a look at the new indoor pool, it's a pretty cool space. These statistics were shared in the admin report last week, but just for the public. In the first week of operation, full operation for the indoor pool, we had 59 lane reservations and 13 reservations for water walkers, and we are getting ready to begin the fitness programming in that space as well. And our memberships continue to increase as well. We currently have 407 total memberships, and we had over 1,800 visits in September, which is pretty cool. We are working on some finishing touches for the project. We still have some landscaping work that's wrapping up, public art, obviously, and we're adding some interior paint and graphics to the building, and then working through that final punch list items, so we can get our car fee and their crew out of there as quickly as possible. So this will be on the website, as usual, tomorrow, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Chris Sands?
I'm guessing Meredith can anticipate my question.
Yes, I will let you know when the art is scheduled to arrive.
I will tell you that I had an inquiry just this afternoon saying, I thought you said it would be, and I'm going, oh, I don't know. Can I give a guess?
Yeah, yeah. So the art is done. We're just waiting for them to coordinate delivery. So we've received pictures of final fabrication. It's just the struggle in COVID with, you know, travel restrictions to get them into our scheme. So we're working through that. If you want to head over to Blessing Hancock's Instagram or Facebook accounts, she does have pictures up of the finished pieces. So that's pretty cool. We're just waiting to get those coordinated, and I will let you know. I was out of town last week. I didn't receive any updates, and I just got back today. Heard otherwise, but they're supposed to give us three days' notice when they're on their way. So I'll be sure to share that on site here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for that update.
Yeah.
Mr. Director McDonald, you want to talk to us about CIP?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I have your October CIP update. I just got a few updates on the programs we still have going on. The 2020 storm drainage, and, which was Johnson Drive, BNSF to East Frontage, started E-City Limits, and the Maston Street improvements from Johnson Drive to Chalmersham Parkway. Maston is, I would say, complete. We had two punch list items to, for them to get done the next day or two, and sod has been done on Maston. So that project is basically complete, once there's two small punch list items. Johnson Drive is substantially complete. The contractor is currently working on sod, and we are waiting on the plantings for the Slater Island. They've got those ordered, and those should be in, and that'll be in this week. And then that project will be completed once they finish the few punch list items they have for there, for those items. We have the LED streetlights, which are on that Johnson Drive project. We're waiting on Evergy to energize that street controller. As soon as they energize that, we'll be able to turn those new streetlights on and have the existing old Cobra-style lights will be removed. We tried to get ahold of Evergy today, but it's a holiday, so our office people were not working, so we're just trying to get an update on when we can get that meter installed. And then the final is the East Frontage Road, 67th to 75th, which is our 2021 Cars Project. Fitness Engineering has just started doing some field surveying on the East Frontage Road, and we're just in the beginning phases of designing that, that project there. I'm here to answer any questions you have on these projects or anything CIP or public works related.
I say Johnson Drive really looks nice. Johnson Drive, and guys did a wonderful job up there.
It's turned out really well, so.
Needs more potholes.
Yeah, slow down, right?
Those are traffic control, calming potholes. Yes. Any questions, Mr. McDonald? Okay, thank you very much, Jim. Mr. Engel, do we have any staff items this evening?
I do not. I'd be happy to answer any questions, so.
Sands?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say that I've been, I don't know if enjoying is the right word, but I've attended a couple of Mark Zooms, for, for lack of a better word. And one of them was on the economic update. I think Christopher may have watched that as well. It, it was very informative and kind of made you feel pretty good that Kansas City was not at the bottom of the heap. We're kind of trucking along okay. And then today, I attended the Crisis Leadership Conference. Oh my goodness, that was very powerful, lots of information. So when they get that put up on the website, I suggest you watch it at leisure. The, the mayor of El Paso talked about what he, where he was and what he had to do, and it, it was just very powerful. I would think it would keep us all honed in on that we need to be prepared. And then the last thing is that Ms. Yodrich and I are going to be attending the OKM conference this week, and we're just super excited.
Via Zoom.
Yes, we're going to sit, we're going to sit in, each of us are going to sit in our own houses and watch each other on Zoom.
Yes.
Well, I can't think of anything more fun than that. Anybody else have any question, any other comments regarding anything, anything of importance? If not, I'll entertain a motion, a second, to adjourn.
I move we adjourn. This is Chris again.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Is muted, all in favor?
Be all in a couple weeks.
Thank you.